Right, everyone, I think we will get started. Councilmember Wayland will not be here tonight, and I'm assuming Councilmember Garcia is on her way. So we will start this study session, a joint study session between the Planning Commission and the City Council on the I-494 interchange market impact evaluation, and I will kick it over to Public Works Director Asher to open us up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers and commission members that are here tonight on this beautiful evening. What we're going to talk about tonight is the 494 corridors of Commerce Project, and just a piece of that, and it's the piece that touches Richfield, so the whole project goes from 169 to the Minnesota River. As part of that, MnDOT's anticipating some access reconfiguration along the Richfield piece of that corridor, and I put this slide up just to get some context before we get into what John Commerce is going to talk about. So we've got the before, the existing is up here, the proposed is down below, and you can see the reshuffling of access points is critical to increase the mobility and the safety along the corridor itself. And so, the before, you have full access at Lindale, which remains, and in the before you have a split access between Portland and 12th, which is then full access at Portland, and then the Niclet full access is replaced with full access at 24th via the 77th Street underpass. The number of access arrows are the same, so the number of access points don't change, it's just a redistribution along the corridor to improve that mobility and safety, which is important to the region and also Richfield. So, the reason we're here tonight, though, is to look at a market impact evaluation. There was concerns related to that access reconfiguration and how that would affect or impact the businesses, and so MnDOT was gracious enough to allow the city to hire a consultant and pay for that study. We have John Commerce with Visible City here, and Carly Anderson, who have conducted the study. There was a study group that John checked in with a couple times during this process that included Hennepin County staff, MnDOT staff, and city staff, and tonight, John will go over his findings. And I think that's it, so John?
Thank you very much, Kristin. Mayor Gonzalez and councilmembers, planning commissioners, really pleased to be here. As Kristin said, I'm joined by Carly Anderson, who's a geospatial analyst and cartographer with Visible City. I am managing principal there.
Better get closer.
Okay.
There we go.
Very good. So we've been working for a number of months on this work, and as Kristin mentioned, we've had regular contact with representatives from MnDOT and from Hennepin County, and I think it's been a fruitful process with a lot of different layers to it. So, I will go through, I have about 45 slides, and I'll try to move through those with some expedience, but please, if it suits you, I'm happy to answer questions as we go, or at the end, depending on what you'd prefer.
Okay, this does.
Okay, great. So this is a little bit of an overview of the scope of the evaluation. We've undertaken an intensive analysis of the project area. We've looked in some detail at land use, at market dynamics, at access and mobility issues, which I think are, in many ways, the core of the evaluation. We've also looked at demography, and then we had some qualitative elements to the project as well, where we looked at similar and comparable projects nationally, which I'll talk about was actually a little more difficult to identify than we expected. And then also, we conducted some outreach with direct participants in the real estate marketplace, either as managers of property or as brokers of property in the project area. And then, of course, we did have a number of check-in meetings to share preliminary findings and get feedback over time. So this is the component pieces of the evaluation overview itself. We've broken this into six categories, as you can see, we'll just jump in. The first of these pieces is land use. This is very familiar to you. This is looking at, at the end of 2018, this is the land use by category, and really, the zone that we particularly focused on extended from 74th to 81st Street in Bloomington, and then really west of 35 to east of Cedar. And we did have some opportunities to reach out to Bloomington. They were not directly involved in the study, but certainly, we looked at dynamics across 494, given that it's really part of the same submarket, et cetera. This is a kind of a clipping and comparison of significant work that I know you've relatively recently finished, looking above at the existing land use map, and then the 2040 planned land use map from the comprehensive plan. You've introduced categories for regional commercial, mixed-use, high-density residential that really dominate the area between 77th Street and 494, which was our primary focus. This is looking at estimated market value of individual parcels in the project area, and we've shown residential parcels in green and then non-residential parcels in blue. You can see a fairly defined, you know, boundary between those two at 77th Street, of course. This next slide shows the change in estimated market values over the last couple of years. And you can see, it's a little washed out in this projection, but the vast majority of the parcels, of course, show positive change in estimated market value during that period. There are a number of parcels, the larger parcels shown in red are, have actually fallen in estimated market value. That can occur for a whole bunch of reasons. One is that some of these larger users are often quite active in challenging increases in estimated market value assessments by the, by Hennepin County. And also, those very large pieces, on a per-square-foot basis, are right now challenging to value, given the fact that that marketplace is in some transition, as you know, just given the big-box kind of environment. But by and large, the story here is, you know, significant and robust growth among most of these parcels. This is a visualization showing a comparison of the value of the building for each parcel compared to the value of the entire parcel. So it's building divided by building plus land, and really what it's showing is a sort of proxy for utilization. And also, on the other side of that, you may say, you know, it's a visualization of the additional capacity that could develop in these particular areas. So, the housing north of 77th Street, you see that the home is more often a higher proportion of the total value than is the case in some of the larger commercial space, particularly south of 494. So we'll move next to some market observations. This is looking at specific businesses in the 77th Street corridor, and we looked at 54 businesses that were located or that are located in this section, that notably include some multifamily entities, too. So we've construed businesses somewhat broadly in this respect. But what we did was we categorized those entities based on whether they're destinations, essentially, or whether they're largely convenience-driven locations. And so you can see, when we parse it that way, the convenience locations are definitely in a striking minority in the composition of the total base. We also looked at what space is currently available in the marketplace. This is commercial space and industrial space that's currently listed as available in the project area, and you can see that this kind of splits really to the west end and then the east end of the project area. The colors are a little washed out in the projection here, but, you know, there's a roughly 300,000 square feet of space that's currently listed in the marketplace for commercial and industrial, and this map shows by color those spaces on an individual basis. And then this next map shows essentially the pricing, the asking price of those spaces on a per-foot basis. So you can see, as the red gets darker, those are more expensive on a per-foot basis, and for industrial, the lighter purple is less expensive, the darker purple is more expensive. This is a kind of a separate snapshot of where are people choosing to check in on Facebook for particular commercial locations in the corridor, and so you can see some of the kind of top, most common locations that are being called out as people identify themselves and check in in these particular places. Fairly active hospitality environment, particularly in this visualization. This is looking at property tax delinquency as of November of 2018, where individual property ID numbers are showing at least $100 of delinquent property tax. And what you're seeing here is not particularly extraordinary. We just wanted to add this as a note, that this is another layer that we considered in the work. We did look at this at a countywide basis, and then, of course, in this project area. And you can see, most of these records are from commercial locations, with this notable exception of non-commercial, which is a condominium building that we looked at right on American Boulevard there. So that's a little bit exceptional. So then we move to, as I mentioned earlier, I think of as kind of the core question that you asked us to explore here, which is about access and mobility and the impact of reconfiguration of access to and from 494 on the marketplace. So we'll spend some time looking at that. First, we're going to start kind of at the broader scale, looking at what's happening, extending well beyond the study area. And, Kristin, do you know, does this have a, is this a pointer?
That little.
Oh, yeah, okay. So it's a little bit difficult to see, but these areas are actually green, and if you've got a...
If you've got the printout, you can see there's a much...
Yeah, if you have a hard copy, it might be easier to see. There's a very large geography where there are, this is looking at origins of trips to this project area, and so you see that a great deal of the metro area is reflected in that light green at least, meaning that this area is drawing from a very significant section of the metro area. And notably, when we look at these transportation metrics that we'll be showing for the next several slides, what that means is that people are not simply traveling through the study area, they're actually, they're actually coming to the study area, they're getting off a ramp, for example, or they're otherwise engaged in a way that does not mean they just came through and didn't turn back, so to speak. Notably, this visualization here is consistent with...
I just didn't quite catch that.
Sure.
Can you just say that last part again, this is the same what exactly?
What we're showing here is, we're just counting people, so to speak, if they, if they come into the project area, into the study area, not if they simply go through it on 494, for example. So we're not just counting people who are going through the study area, we're saying if they come into the study area and then exit the freeway, or otherwise are engaged in the study area, then they're counted, right?
Clarify what the numbers mean, I guess?
Yeah, so Streetlight Index, the, Streetlight is the source that we're using for a lot of this transportation data, and what Streetlight is using is essentially mobile phone data. So, I'll show you in a little while that we're able to look at, you know, the origin of trips relating to, for example, cars that are in a very specific geography, and we can say, where did those cars come from, essentially, and we're using cell phone data to track that. This index, it corresponds to traffic counts, to counts of cars, but it's not, it's not a one-for-one, it doesn't mean necessarily that 21, 148 cars were in that specific space, but it is...
And that's because you could have more than one cellphone in the car?
I'm not sure exactly why there is a distinction there, but...
It's, my understanding is because it's a sample that they normalize over a given year, so it's a derived value that's based on both the origin and the destination, so that's the main way that it differs than just a raw traffic count.
Mm-hmm.
And just to clarify, numbers count, the cellphones ping when they essentially cross the threshold of one of the exits in the, within the square, so they're either coming or going through our exits, essentially, right?
That's exactly right. Methodologically, what happens, and Carly, you should correct me if I get off-track here, but what we do essentially is establish sort of gates, where we're saying, okay, if someone were to get off the highway at Portland, then we've set up a gate there to track that behavior, and so that's what's, that's what's being tracked. And notably, I mean, that is much more geographically specific than what was available not even very long ago, and that's, I think, one of the things that makes it really useful for this kind of evaluation.
Do you, is there any way to separate the employees in this area versus other, I mean, there's no way to do that, would there be?
Actually, there is. In fact, we've got some data looking at where visitors work, so where, I'll show that in a moment. I was going to mention that this finding and visualization, I think, is really consistent with the work that I know the Met Council has shared, showing that along this section of 494, all but four counties, on average, have at least one visitor to this corridor every day, which is pretty notable, 83 out of 87 is not so bad.
Can I ask a question on behalf of our residents? I'm sure I'll get a question about it.
Sure.
Do we have any policies, or do you have a policy or an agreement about anonymizing that data? I'm sure our residents would be curious to know, if any individual knows where they go to work or things like that.
Thank you for asking that. The answer is yes, on both fronts, so we have, the data is anonymized before we're using it in this setting. I should also mention, though, we, as a company, also have a data privacy policy that we adhere to, which is a commitment that we do not collect anyone's identifying information, and we do not keep names or anything like that, certainly any other identifying characteristics. We're not interested in that marketplace. Sadly, there is a marketplace for that, but we're not involved in that, so.
The way we get the data is just a total value by census tract, so it's not even on, much less tied than one's name.
Can I just interrupt, remind people, would you please turn the microphones on when you speak?
Sorry about that.
Just because we're recording, so we'll pick it up.
Right.
Thanks. Yeah, you just have to hit the button.
Okay.
I have one more question about that index, the Streetlight Index, I'm trying to understand it. So looking at the study area, the orange area has the most outside visitors that came and stayed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be helpful to blow that up? I mean, is there another shot that shows more detail of what those areas are, like what the businesses are, or...
I believe that these geographies that you see are transportation analysis zones, is that right?
Census tracts.
Oh, they're census tracts. So unfortunately, we cannot break down within that geography to look in more detail. We can, in the inverse, which is what I described earlier, where we can say, okay, if we want to look at this parking lot, for example, we can make conclusions about where those visitors are coming from, but we can't necessarily do it the opposite direction to say, all right, we want to know which specific place the car came to from to get to this parking lot. Does that, does that make sense?
Not necessarily caring where they came from, but what, what are, what are these along the freeway? What are those areas?
We could put together a visualization that overlays businesses and other things in those areas, and that would be helpful. We don't, I don't think we came prepared with that, but that's...
Well, I don't know if it's, I mean, if I'm the only one that's curious about it, but I was wondering what they are that are getting more or less.
Right. We did focus, and this will be coming up also, on one intersection, 77th and Portland, just that, that does get a lot of traffic, just to see where exactly people are coming from.
Can I just confirm, so the colors on the map are where they came from, right? And then the outlined areas where they went, anywhere in that area, so anybody originated, including within that area, and that's what we're looking at.
That's exactly right.
So it's not that they're going, two businesses in the orange area, but they're going to anything in the red block?
Right, and we do have some follow-up content that I'll share with you that dives a little more deeply into that.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's exactly right, what this is showing. So, the next slide shows where the visitor is to that same study area where they live. And so you can see that this section in Richfield and Bloomington really is part of a pretty significant, you know, work shed that extends well to the south of 494. So, this is showing that people from Farmington, Elko, New Market, et cetera, are coming to this area for their place of work.
Where they live.
Yes.
Yes.
This is where they live. So moving on, then, we can say, where do those 2018, where are those visitors in that study area, where do they work, as well? And so you can see, there's a fair amount of trips where people clearly are, they're working maybe to the south somewhere, they're in the study area doing business, or for lots of different reasons, and then this is showing where they work. So there's a lot of, you know, not surprisingly, a lot of travel along 494, and then north and south on these key routes, in order to get to destinations in the study area, and then all around the study area. So looking at, in a little more detail now, this gets into some more specific content that I think, I think you've requested, looking at how do people move around in this, in this space, and how do they access that study area? And again, this goes to this methodology of setting up sort of gates, so we're monitoring exactly how people are moving around, and you can see that there's really a lot of entry points into this, into the space. You see east and westbound, you know, a lot of people getting off 494, and then these north-south arterials are really key access points, too, where it's fairly well distributed across those, those north-south routes, Lindale, Niclet, Portland, and 12th, how people are accessing this space. This is looking at daily traffic counts for cars in 2017, and you really just see a fairly predictable matrix of routes here, really just shows the grid of the arterials that are being used primarily. So from that, then we walk into three slides showing transit dynamics, and I'm skipping ahead a little bit, but in some of the conversation with participants in the real estate marketplace, the issue of transit accessibility came up in a number of occasions, where that was clearly of significant value, particularly for the multifamily operators, they just felt like this is a pretty well-served area, we want to make sure that that continues to be the case. So this is looking at total trip count by route, so how many, how many buses individually are traveling down these particular routes in a given day? And then, expanding on that, this is looking at average daily boardings by individual bus stop, and you can just see, there's a fair amount of, you know, heavy use on 77th and American, particularly around Niclet and Portland, those nodes, I think, are kind of key connections to the regional network. So these are boardings, and then the next slide here is the lightings.
Can I, can I...
Where people are getting off.
Ask a question real quick?
Absolutely.
All right. I noticed some of the larger hubs are right on Niclet Avenue, where the proposed reconfiguration would eliminate access to 494. Is there any sense of, in this analysis, how, how much of that traffic would be impacted by the access points on 494?
So, Councilmember Meaning, how many of these routes are actually using 494 as part of the network?
Yeah, I'm just trying to draw a connection between this and the decision we have to make, and if you had any insight to share on that, it would be helpful.
My sense is, is that if we move back to the routes, you really see, you know, American really is kind of the key spine here, and then, although these are shown in yellow, these north-south connections came up in a number of conversations, and so, although even the frequency may not be as high as it is on the east-west routes, my, the insight that we got from these conversations was that that north-south connection was also really important, even though the frequency isn't what, what they would like it to be. I don't see any actually routes on 494, and we'd have to double-check that exactly. I feel like there is some service, whether it's maybe the suburban transit providers rather than Metro Transit doing that service.
Can you clarify what the number of trips, because like Portland and Niclet have 20-minute service during the regular day, so I don't know how it could possibly be under 10 trips per day. Does that mean number of buses on the route? I just don't think that's right.
So, okay, well, that's, we'll double-check that. That would be a lot higher number if it's every 20-minute service.
It definitely is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that, we'll double-check that. So we'll move on from transit service. We've got now three, three cases, specific geographies, that we looked in more detail at, in terms of origin/destination analysis. So the first here is at Niclet and 77th, and so what we did was we looked at the same exercise, so where, where do the visitors live who are headed to this particular location? And then next, where do those visitors work? And then finally, how do those visitors reach that particular retail location? And so you can see large flow down Niclet, also 77th Street from the west, down Portland, and also westbound at 12th Ave. And I think that's interesting in particular, because these, of course, you know, are a half-mile apart at each interval, and so to see people exiting westbound at 12th in order to get to this location in Niclet, I thought was notable. So that is retail store number one. We did another case, looking at another sample retail location. This is fairly similar in terms of where those visitors live, and then where they work. Again, you really see this strong emphasis on that 494 connectivity that people are using, and given the number of jobs, you know, located along 494, that's, that's not And again, how visitors reach that location on an average day, and you see this one is different, but at the same time, similar in the sense that drivers are taking these neighboring exits, in addition to, you know, those located right there, there's activity here, activity here, and then the north-south connections as well. So lastly, then we also look specifically at 77th and Portland, looking again at visitor origins, and how people are reaching that particular location. And this is a little bit different visualization, but it's, it's not, not quite as, not quite as far-reaching, I think, as the others, but certainly still pretty extensive. And then again, how visitors reach that location, you see a little less emphasis on those north-south routes, with the exception of southbound on Portland, and then here again, exiting on 12th Ave in order to get to Portland. So that was one of the things that I found notable, was just sort of the, I don't know if interchangeability is the right word, but sort of, to the extent to which people are getting off one exit in order to get to a location... are getting off one exit in order to get to a location that's, that's not adjacent, you know, that's another half-mile down. These last two slides on the, on the travel behavior refer to the Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport, and this is looking at how visitors from the airport reach the study area. And so you can see, again, you know, very, very kind of dominant role of this 12th Avenue exit, in this particular case, people traveling westbound, exiting there. And then in the reverse, how visitors travel from the study area to, to the airport. You can see, you know, just in the context of the, of the airport terminals, the, the activity in the, in the study area. So, moving on a little bit here, we've got a couple of slides looking at demography, and this demonstrates, this data's a little bit, a couple of years old, but it's the most recent available on this, on this scale, and this looks at the most common occupation by job location. I think it really demonstrates the, you know, the fact that there's a fairly diverse base of economic activity happening in the, in the study area. And then proceeding on, this is looking at where workers work. Interesting that this number extends up to 2,500, in a, you know, in one of these fairly small geographies, it's a pretty significant number for this kind of environment. And then where workers live, so that's not, not particularly surprising on that, on that front. So the next piece is looking at some comparable projects, and as I mentioned, you know, there's a lot of comparable projects that you could look at, where there's just additions to the number of interchanges on a, on an interstate. There are fewer to look at, where there's more of a reconfiguration or redistribution of those access points. We did-
Actually, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Did you happen to, to consider how, because we, when we redid Lyndale, and that access, that, that access point was reconstructed over a period of years, did you happen to consider that, and how the impacts to local businesses and the community during the years that, that we went through this process in this, in this corridor?
Locally, right at Lyndale?
Yeah.
We did not do that, no.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, that, that sounds like it would be an interesting evaluation.
It would be interesting, and I, I was under the impression that maybe somebody had reached out and asked you guys about that specifically, so I was just, that, I didn't mean to gotcha, it was just, I was wondering if, if somebody had mentioned that.
No, no. We're grateful to conversations that we had with the Center of Transportation Studies and, and the Humphrey School, to help us kind of cast the net fairly widely. We did find three, I think, strong comparables, where you've got, you know, significant interstate, you've got a commercial and mixed-use multifamily corridor, and you've got some kind of reconfiguration decision that's made. So the first of those was a project called Columbus Crossroads, it's in Columbus, Ohio, and that is a project that's underway by the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, along with the City of Columbus and, and ODOT. They conducted an evaluation in advance of their federal, federal grant application. The crossroads refers to where Interstate 70 and 71 come together, essentially right next to downtown Columbus, and the project was designed to address a number of problematic issues in the corridor. There were closely spaced interchanges that were adding to weaving and merging problems that were leading to lots of accident issues. There were actually 21 ramps to and from city streets, within just a three-and-a-half-mile stretch of this, of this, this crossroad, so very, you can imagine, very congested activity, people weaving, et cetera. And that left insufficient lengths of ramps for acceleration and merging and that kind of activity. So the plan is to consolidate multiple exit ramps, and also replace multiple bridges and reconstruct the highway itself. That evaluation found that the reconfiguration and redistribution of ramps would allow for the city to take advantage of underutilized real estate development potential, which I thought was, was relevant, given the, the underpass, and, you know, the possibility of extending some of that access to 24th Avenue. I think that that's, that's relevant. The second comparable is, is in Bakersfield, California, project by Caltrans, USDOT, and Federal Highway Administration. They made a decision in 2016 to, to move forward with construction, again, at, at an intersection of Highway 58 and 99. I think those roadways, although they're state highways in California, I think they're comparable in scale to 494. There's also an adjacent commercial district in that case, and there will be closure of, of a couple of interchanges in that, in that setting. And so that evaluation, that record of decision, also found that the economic impact was not projected to be significant or negative in that, in that project. And then the last case, and perhaps the most relevant, is actually west of Milwaukee, in Milwaukee County, along I-94, there's a project from 70th Street to 16th Street in, in Milwaukee County, and WISDOT conducted a survey of businesses in the vicinity of the Holly Road interchange, which will be half-closed, and then also at Mitchell Road, which will be entirely closed during that, or not during, but as a result of that project, and, and assessed the economic impacts associated with, with modified access at those points. And what they found essentially was, not unlike the, the ODOT example, that there would be some localized impact, and, and yet, at the areas not far down the road, where there was new access, that there would be more convenience-driven kind of activity at those locations, so-
Do we have any new access contemplated, or is that, that's assuming the underpass?
That's assuming the underpass goes through.
That is, I, my understanding is that, that is what MINDOT is envisioning for, the reconfiguration. Is that correct to say, Kristen? Okay.
Are they, have they committed to paying for the envisioning at this point? Okay, I was just clarifying.
Good question.
I also had a question, so from what you're saying, it impacts the convenience places versus differently than the destination places?
Yes, right, that's, that, that is what we gathered from the closest comparables that we could find. And I think, too, you know, each of those comparables is related in the sense that this kind of market environment, and this kind of land use, I think, is much more robust in kind of responding to changes in how those interchanges might be configured, just because, you know, if you think about sort of the, the travel shed, how many people can get to this project area within, you know, a 15-minute drive, or even a 15-minute bike ride? That's a very large number, and so that allows for a fair amount of flexibility and strength that you might not see in other settings, where there's just less density.
Could you say that again? I didn't quite follow you.
Sure.
Which, less density results in what?
I, I simply meant that, I think this section of 494 is characterized by a fair amount of density, both in terms of jobs, you know, commercial activity, housing, et cetera, and so if we go back to that slide, looking at the very, the range of occupations that are active in this space, there's a lot of different activities happening, and at a fairly significant scale, and I think that that makes the corridor less vulnerable to whatever the reconfiguration of access might be. That's essentially what I was-
Thank you.
-trying to convey. So this is a, this is looking at that third example that I mentioned, just a, a rendering of what that project will look like west of Milwaukee. We also conducted some market outreach, as I, as I mentioned. We looked at, well, we reached out to 12 commercial brokers, who are listing 17 spaces in the, in the area, and then also reached out to four multifamily operators, who I think are pretty significant in the, in the, in the study area. We were able to talk with a number of, of those people, and they, I did not, I, I asked them to have conversations essentially without, without naming them, so they're not, they're not named here, but these are, this is testimony that they gave us in those conversations over the last several months. So by and large, I think, you know, there, there had already been significant outreach around the project to business owners, and so many people, I think, are aware of the project. I think overall, there is, there's strong support for dealing with, you know, what's viewed as problematic congestion issues on 494, and, and at the same time, I think, you know, with, with the exam, with the exception of the, the lower middle, I, I think, generally speaking, people seem pretty, pretty positively disposed to the idea of, of changing the configuration of access to 494.
I, I know that you mentioned, the density may provide a, a bit of adaptability to these changes, but, you know, since you've kind of been working with this data, and know it back and forth, this is the first time that I'm seeing it, I'm curious to, to ask what, what you see might be the biggest challenges that we would need to consider, given if this proposal, given the way that it's configured now? What are the, what are the items, or what are the key takeaways that I could take from the planning commission, in regards to maybe alleviating or mitigating some of those things that, that, that you see as, as particular choke points, or any challenges, I guess, that would, that arise?
Yeah, great, thank you for your question. I, I think one of the, one of the, the themes in the feedback that we got was concern about, you know, to what extent do property owners have flexibility to make, to kind of pivot the use of their property? And it feels to me like that is going to be, you know, an important theme. It's my impression, if we go back to one of the very early slides, if we look at the work that the city has undertaken around the new comprehensive plan, my sense is that that provides for more flexibility in the, in the land use, so giving property owners more ability to kind of pivot to changing market conditions, and potentially changing access. I think that will be helpful. I know that, you know, the city is quite engaged right now in the market, in terms of, you know, there's a new level of demand for space in Richfield, and I think this is, you know, you're seeing this in a lot of, a lot of first-rate suburbs, where there's just, there's a fair amount of developable space, and, and a lot of demand for those kinds of locations, not just for multifamily, but other kinds of uses, too. So, I, I don't unfortunately have kind of a list of, you know, what are the, what are the challenges? My, my, my takeaway is essentially, what are sort of the big ideas to, to leave with you? I think, I think the fact that, a, a significant degree, that most of the feedback that we got from the, from the market participants was, was positive. That's, I think, an important takeaway. Another is that I think there is a strong diverse market, and as the travel shed data really shows, you know, people are coming from a very large section of the metro area, for a lot of different reasons, to this section of, you know, the sub-market, where Richfield and Bloomington come together. And I think that that's, that's a really important and a positive storyline, I think, for whatever you choose to do in this, in this section. The last piece that we've not really gotten deeply into is, is that the underpass does have big potential. I mean, it's, it's pretty notable, when you get east of Cedar, you know, it's a very different feeling kind of use, and I know there's a lot of institutional and public landowners in that, in that section. Obviously, that's not in the, in the city, but at the same time, you know, being able to continue to build on the work that you've done at the end of Seventy-seventh Street there, with the hotel property, and trying to make that connection to 24th, that seems pretty, like a pretty strong prospect for, for development, you know, just given the fact that the work we do is with the public and private sector, and when I look at that section, and you think about what's the value of a potential underpass there, I think it's pretty significant.
So I would like to have the last half hour for questions and discussion from council members and commissioners, but I did want to invite Nick Brenner from Menards up, he would like to share a comment, so Nick, if you can come up and maybe sit here between our commissioners, and they can share the microphone with you to share your comment. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Brenner, I'm here with Menards. Thank you. So I just wanted to come today, I've met with city staff before this, and I've also met with the DOT. I think obvious, it's pretty obvious why I'm here, being one of the biggest businesses on Niclet, and seeing how much use that we use at interchange for the store. As a company, we are very nervous about losing this interchange. It's pretty evident that it is very convenient to get to the store off of 494 today, and we do have a lot of customers coming from both the west and the east on 494. And one of the things that I wanted to mention after listening to the presentation, is the difference between convenience and destination stores. Convenience is a major factor in either situation. We've seen many destination stores, such as Macy's, Sears, K-Marts, go out of business because of the e-commerce boom. It's very convenient these days to go online and order your merchandise online, and as a company, as a physical retailer like Menards, it is more important than ever to make sure that it is convenient to, not only to get to the store, but make sure it's convenient to shop the store. We have rolled out remodels to all 300 of our stores, to anticipate and compete with e-commerce, and by losing the access here at Niclet, it's directly conflicting what we've worked so hard to try and compete with. Losing this access is, is a very big deal. It's been through every rank within our company, from our operations team to our legal team, all the way up to our chief operating officer and the owner himself. So it is something that I have been very involved with, making sure that I'm updated on, so I can provide the right updates to ownership and everyone involved. And unfortunately, a lot of people think that it's not the biggest deal in the world to, excuse me, go one exit down to either Lyndale or Portland, but unfortunately, the gap between convenience and online, you know, going online and actually going to the physical store is such a small gap these days, that it doesn't take much to shift someone from going, hey, let's go to the store, too, let's go buy my, my, you know, my power drill on Amazon. So it's something that we're competing with, it's something that we have seen as a company impact our sales throughout the Midwest, where we have our stores, and it's something that we always need to be aware of, and make sure that we are providing the best service that we possibly can to the community that we're in existence of.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Have you done any studies on your own as a store, from like where your customers are coming from, or how they're getting there?
Yeah, we've run some numbers on seeing where, we have data that, you know, when people use and buy merchandise at the store, we have data that we can use to see where they're coming from, where they live. So we've polled that, and there's, you know, it's very consistent with what you saw with the mobile, the phones, we have a lot of people that come from the north, but we do have a lot of people coming from the south, and a lot of people coming from the west, a lot of people that use that 494 access. So I think it's very consistent with what you saw, and, you know, it's, I don't really know if there's much more than we can do with that, and unfortunately, it's very hard to predict how this is going to impact things, because, you know, just in the last five years, you've seen how retail has changed so much, you know, what impacts, you know, what impacts we will see tomorrow is going to be vet, you know, very different and drastic from what we may see five to 10 years from now. And you can see that trend keeps going to e-commerce, and that's just something that we need to continue to fight as we continue to do business.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Questions, comments from planning commissioners and council members?
Go ahead. So it's, you said that primarily the feedback's been positive from, you're talking about these 21 entities, right, that you, but why are they in favor of moving the access points? These quotes don't support, tell me why they are in favor. A lot of them don't, aren't even relevant to moving them, so I'm not, I'm confused why they would be in favor of it. Can you tell me what their feedback was about changing access points this much?
Sure, absolutely. I don't want to overstate, you know, to what extent they're sort of champions for the reconfiguration, but I would say that generally speaking, I'm trying to think if there are any exceptions. I believe that everyone, when I reached out, everyone was generally aware that the discussion was underway and that I think that they had been reached out to already, you know, either by the city or by MINDOT. So there was a general awareness of the project and these comments were all offered kind of in that context of, okay, I understand that there may be changes in how the access is configured. These are some additional comments I want to offer. For example, you know, the issue of a sound wall, right, it's not pointing exactly to, yes, I would like access to be reconfigured or not, but that was a particular point that I thought was, was, you know, worth as a detail, including in the larger picture. When I went through, when our team went through the feedback that had already been gathered from individual businesses, and I don't know if you've reviewed that or had that shared with you, but, you know, generally speaking, there's a fair amount of support for, you know, the idea of addressing 494 issues on, in its own right. I think there's support for, for the project, you know, at a high level in those comments. I think there are about 35 businesses that were reached in that, in that setting. So this is sort of building on top of that.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
First off, I was wondering about the additional feedback, since there were 16 interviews. If there's more data, it'd be great to see it and I understand if it's anonymized or whatever, but it seems like there's probably a lot more there than the six quotes, so I would really love to see that. But just in general, I wanted to say the most compelling thing to me, although thinking a little bit differently about it based on that Menards testimony, the most compelling thing to me was at the beginning of the difference between the destination items and the convenience items and the fact that we're so heavily tilted towards the destination things is very encouraging to me in losing this exit. But I also wanted to emphasize, because we're talking a lot about losing an exit, but we're also gaining two local accesses that don't exist right now and I think that could be more beneficial than we're giving it credit for. In this entire section of 494, you know, from 35 to Cedar, there is no way to get across the freeway without dealing with interchange traffic and congestion and I think that, and I think of, and I certainly don't want to put words in the mouth because I respect Menards' concerns about that, but I think as a customer, Menards even trying to get out of their parking lot because there's this constant interchange traffic, making it very difficult to make a left turn. So although I again, respect that business's opinion of that change, there are benefits in being able to minimize that traffic and congestion and benefits for the residents who live along this corridor too, being able to cross at Nicolet and 12th or pedestrian bridge without having to deal with cars turning off the freeway, I think would be a real positive to our community and to Bloomington.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Well, I want to ask, Mayor, I just want to, have you worked with John Stark from Community Development? Okay, good.
We have, John has been part of our check-in meetings and we've been in dialogue.
Because, you know, I mean, when this first, when this idea first came up, you know, I mean, I thought it was great, it would be a great boost to the economy, tax economy and tax-based economy, but, you know, I don't know how your prediction and what the comprehensive plan, you know, would we have the ability to really do something on Cedar frontage and, you know, and on 77th continuing on? So I just wondered if they had any thoughts about that or do you think, what do you think about that?
Well, I'll certainly let John and Melissa speak on their own behalf, but I do think one of the threads of dialogue along those lines has been to try to understand from MINDOT, will there be any potential sort of recapture of right-of-way in this project where we might be able to bring some of that land, you know, into taxable use for the city? MINDOT's been pretty clear that they're really not at a place in their planning where that's even a sort of a live topic yet, so the timing for this work did not really line up. But I do think, council member, to speak to your question about, you know, on the east end of 77th Street, I do think that that's a significant opportunity for the city in terms of creating, you know, a viability for those uses on that end of the corridor that, right now are pretty challenged, just given the way the transportation access is configured there.
Well, I always thought too, that it would be, you know, that that area would be compatible to airport use, so I don't know. John?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners and Council Members. You know, I always, personally, I always thought in the whole study area, you've got to look at each interchange, each piece of geography individually and each one of those is going to have some positives and negatives from the change. Certainly, the biggest negative will be Nicolet. There are a lot of positives. Portland Avenue is going to be a big positive, that the businesses on Portland are going to be much more accessible. As you mentioned, the far east area where the tunnel's going to come in, that's going to be much more accessible. And so, you know, when you start taking the positives and the negatives at each location, you know, that's, I think, why we wanted John to come in and do a study was to maybe help us to think of that in more quantitative terms, because I couldn't give you numbers. I couldn't say, well, Nicolet is a minus three, but Portland's a plus five. Intuitively, personally, I think that this is a wash or better. That's my opinion.
Okay, good. And can I have a follow-up? Now, if we do, hopefully, we won't have a sound wall, right? I mean, that's what we would be hoping for, because, I mean, it would be detrimental. We've got those two-car dealerships and Menards and, you know, are the biggest.
You know, in my tenure here, this is the first time I've ever heard anybody talking about a sound wall on 494. I hear talk about a sound wall on Truck Highway 77 all the time, but I never hear about it on 494, so that might be a single person's concern rather than something that's shared widely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I'd like to just make a comment, just looking through all of these different slides and the importance of the corridor to the whole region and how far it extends that people are coming every single day from all over the area, again, is just more reinforcement for the necessity of the underpass and getting that taken care of and done as a part of this project. So I don't know if there's any way to be using this information and data in that, but that is absolutely essential part of this as well and this just reinforces that. Other comments, questions? So I guess I'm just wondering about with staff in terms of timing, how we might continue to use this. I know MINDOT had talked about their timeline for coming back to us, so kind of how does this all fit together moving forward?
Well, I'm just, Mayor and Council Members, Commissioners, if there's any follow-up information or if this you feel comfortable and you want to sit and think about it, I think that MINDOT will be looking, I think, on the August timeframe. They'll be back, is my understanding and I guess we'll just go from there, but.
So is this PowerPoint the sum of the presentation we're expecting? Okay. I guess that, I mean, you referenced several comparable sites, but we, there was only one slide for one of those. They were generally positive. I kind of similarly, I have the same questions Commissioner Lavin does. Basically, I don't just want sunny examples of everything that went well. I'd like examples, counterexamples of when things didn't go well and what we should be wary of, what things are, so it's not just, these things are good, we think we fit in with these things, but it would be really useful for me to say, here's an example where we lost access and it went poorly and here's, this is, and so there's some counterexamples in there, so I guess, I guess I'm, I'm, I don't feel like I, I have, I guess I have a lot of questions and now I see, you know, maybe five minutes left and, you know, no written data, just, I mean, they're interesting, but I don't, I don't have enough tools, I feel, at this point, relative to what I was expecting.
Okay, sure. That's, I appreciate that. We would be happy to bring in some additional comparables, even though they might not be as closely related in our view. I'd be happy to make sure that we bring in some that are more of cautionary tales. And also, if you feel like there's a document in a different format, if you'd like a memorandum or something of bad nature for your consideration, really happy to produce that kind of document as well.
I think as Commissioner Hayford O'Leary mentioned, getting more of the feedback would be great, just to find out what people had to say.
And to follow up on their comments, I think it would be easier to have a memorandum because I like to read things and that's how I make a connection, rather than, you know, than look at maps and that type of data. That's just the way my mind works, so I agree with their comments.
Thank you.
We still have over 10 minutes left, so I don't know if there's more, more questions.
It wasn't directly related to the memo, it was just another 494 thing, since we had time, but if, did you have something else, more on the memo?
I think, you know, something that would help, help me, you know, one of the decisions, you know, there's short and long-term opportunities, there's, you know, short-term pain, intermediate term pain, long-term pain. In my mind, I'm thinking, we've been in expansion for 10 years, you know, we're probably, we're probably due for a correction in the next couple of years, that's probably when this is going to happen and, and we're not asking you to make all our decisions for us, but anything that you can speak into to say, this is, the disruption, you know, we can expect a five-year, 10-year recovery from the disruption that's happening, you know, anything, if there's any insight that you can bring to that timeline, just so we can reflect on that, we can share that with residents, saying this is tough now, but yeah, if you have any insight on that, that'd be, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
One other thing that I'd be interested in too would be, you know, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a specific, and I'm coming into this a little bit late, I haven't seen a specific, like, diagram of what the, what the frontage roads will look like, what the, you know, the, there's going to be obviously access between if you have to get off on Portland to get to Nicolet or Lindell to get to, you know, the side streets and the frontage roads. I don't know what's, what type of volume of traffic we're expecting on those roads and I'm not sure if that's something that you could help us, you know, given these changes, how much of that would flow over to these, these roads and what we should be expecting and what we should be planning for in regards to volume being pushed off into the frontage roads or into the neighborhoods simply because those exits no longer exist? Is that, is that something you think you'd be able to?
Well, Commissioner, I can answer that. MINDOT has done that work and the 77th Street and American Boulevard were put in to act as those frontage roads in the long-term plan. And so we have that data and just, we can share that with you, but just so you know, north of 77th Street, nothing's expected to change as far as volumes, it just will increase the volumes kind of on the east end where the underpass will allow for that access and.
No changes to 77th Street?
Not significant, only significant on the east end where the underpass, yes, but I can share that with you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
If I could just jump back to you.
Yep.
I was just curious, based on Council Member Garcia's comment, probably a question for Kristen, but what would be, what is the process for a sound wall determination? In particular, I would think perhaps different properties would have different preferences, like multifamily housing would probably want it more than big box retail.
Right, good question, but there is, this project will definitely trigger the noise wall process where it goes out to the public for basically and essentially a vote and then it's left up to the vote of the people along the corridor, whether they want the wall or not.
And are rental residents able to vote or is it only the property owners who vote?
They are able to vote.
Okay.
In fact, I mean, just over when they did the Xerxes Bridge a number of years ago over 494, there was a vote that they did not want a noise wall. The underpass project triggered the process and there'll be a two-block noise wall going in on 77th Street, or 70, Highway 77, so never know.
Any final questions or comments?
I just, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I would oppose a noise wall because I think that would hinder our ability for a, for a growing tax base. You know, people want access and they want to see, they want to see the stores that are right there, so.
Commissioner Quam.
I, this is the third meeting that we've had on this that I've been at and I remember our first one, how, kind of to reiterate what the mayor said, how strongly the former city manager felt about not, you know, letting this go too far without getting the underpass taken care of. I was just wondering where that's at. I remember it was just like, don't, you know, this is the time to iron that out.
Right. Right now, the underpass is set to be, not set in the way that we're fully funded, but set to go to construction 2021 and we are, we have a gap and we have an ask-in for 7 million now at the legislature for next session and we're hoping that we're successful with that. And if we are not, and I would think we would know, middle of the year next year, then we'll be looking to MINDOT to help out. That's, but I'm confident, so, you know, stay positive.
Thank you, Mayor. Given, given that and not asking you to weigh into anything political, but were you to evaluate this opportunity lest that underpass, how would that, if at all, change your, your recommendation of the market impacts of the takings and the loss of access?
That's a great question. I would want to have some internal conversation about that, it's a pretty significant question.
Could, in your memorandum, could you linger there?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so just a final thought, I think these are really, this is good feedback, this is what I was hoping for, because we do want to answer the questions and go into this with our eyes wide open, especially the comparables, wherever they did, maybe it didn't go so well. I think that's, that if you can find that, it would be good, because I think, I, like John, I feel that this is not going to be significant and maybe really good for the region and Richfield to kind of clean up the interchanges and the 494 and I think it'll just be good for Richfield. But, and maybe we have areas where there aren't such good stories, but maybe we can pinpoint how Richfield's situation is different and why it didn't work out and then it just brings assurances that this is, this could be good. So, and we have some follow-up items, so, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and we will close the study session. Thank you.
Thank you.